That's just signing in. Yeah, Bob's a preacher. He wants to talk to us about the council.
Good, Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Charlie Davidson.
Here.
George Glover. Lynda Westhafer. Charles Swankie.
Here.
Terry Osburn.
Here.
Troy Hill.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Council President, you have a call.
This is Tuesday, September 23rd, 7:00 PM. It's our regular council meeting date and time. And we'll start with the invocation from Bob.
First of all, on behalf of Park City, I'd like to thank each and every councilman that is here. You've been serving this city well. And I know that you weigh a lot of decisions in matters that pertain to this city, so thank you, thank you. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with our hearts, with no pretense. God, you said in your word, Lord, that if any man lacks wisdom, let him ask, and you would give it to him liberally, without wavering, without any remorse. So, God, this evening, Father, as these councilmen, Lord, weigh the matters of the day, the mandates that is upon this season of Park City. Lord, give them wisdom. Lord, let there be a peace, Lord, that just settles all over this community, Father. Lord, I thank you, God, for our men and women, Lord, that are serving this community to keep us safe, to keep our streets and our neighborhoods in a peaceful way. Thank you so much, Heavenly Father. Lord, bless this council, God. Bless them in their lives and their homes, God. And, Lord, thank you for the blood of Jesus Christ that was shed upon Calvary for each and every one of our lives. In your name I pray, Father. Amen.
Thank you, Bob. We have a guest tonight that's going to lead us in the flag salute. Ebron is going to, he's from 584, and he's working toward earning one of his citizenship badges. So, if you'd lead us in.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can motion to approve the agenda for this evening. Terry?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, Charlie?
I second.
All right. They moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, any awards and presentations tonight?
No.
Public forum, we have one speaker, Bob Darnell.
I live at 1618 East Lancaster Drive. And the improvements that have been made on the drainage ditch behind my property is really good, but there's an issue. Directly behind my property, they have put in like a concrete barrier or like a little dam. So, there is water standing in that drainage ditch. And my concern is the mosquitoes. So, is there anything that could be done? Maybe like the city going there and put those mosquito pucks in that pool of water. And also, when that company started doing that work, I asked them if they were going to clean out the tall grass all the way up to our fences, and they said yes. Well, the Johnson grass did not get cleaned all the way up, and so there's about a three-foot area of Johnson grass growing. So, as everybody should know here, Johnson grass doesn't care where the seed falls. Johnson grass is going to come back up. And then the last thing about the construction, the bridge that you have to cross on Park Avenue. It is always closed, but they're never working. So, why can't, when they're not working, those barricades be moved off to the side so people can drive through that street? I know that there may be some variances in what they're doing there, but it seems like for the last two weeks, they haven't done anything. And so, those barricades are there. And it just seems like it's a hassle to have to turn around and say, oh, we can't go through there today. We got to turn around and go back the other way. So, that is my concern, and that's what I wanted to present in this form.
Okay, thank you. I think Gina was listening to all that. Do you have a comment to make?
Yeah, so we have had a particularly rainy season since we've started this project. One of the concerns, I'll address the road closure first. One of the concerns there is that they have started getting into structural things. And so, I'm not sure that the integrity would be there to allow people to safely pass through, even if they haven't already removed the boxes in the roadway. East Park View is one of the locations at our last council meeting that we had approved for a water line lowering. And that is set to occur either the late part of this week or the early part of next week. And so, really, those water lines are what is holding up the new boxes from being installed at those different crossings. They are not done grading. The wet weather has really impacted them. One of the reasons they have certain areas dammed up is that channel takes on drainage from everything on hydraulic. So, everything from Park Center or the Prairie Hills subdivision is draining across underneath hydraulic and then eventually into that area. It goes into the pond there in Village Estates, and then it drains on into that channel. And so, they've had to barricade some areas just to try to keep it as dry as possible while they work in there. Otherwise, the ground would be too soft to really do anything. And so, I know we've had some delays. It is a long project. It's anticipated to take until the end of the year, early part of next year. But the rain has definitely impacted the speed at which they're able to go on that, along with the water line lowerings that have happened. We do have some dunks available at Public Works. We don't typically, you know, hand them out the same way that the county does. The county health department does have free dunks available that they pass out to citizens. But we'd be happy to go throw some in. We've done it in other areas where we've had some mosquito problems.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Anything in staff reports?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Terry?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And a second, Charlie?
Yes, second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. All right, back to old business. Discuss and consider approving an innovative technology award agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation.
Good evening, Council President and Council. Staff received approval at the September 9th council meeting for the mayor to execute an agreement for the innovative technology grant with the Kansas Department of Transportation for a transportation network evaluation using artificial intelligence. The grant is funded through reimbursement, requiring the obligation to reflect the total amount of $65,500 as opposed to the motion which was made for $16,375. Staff is requesting an updated motion to approve the total obligation. I stand for any questions you may have.
I just had one thing. Basically, the $65,000 we put up, we have to put that up front now. But they're going to refund all but $16,000 on some odd dollars. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions of Gina? Oh, I got some here. Jim?
I actually don't have any questions, so I'd move and approve, authorize the mayor to execute the innovative technology award agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation. The amount of $65,500 to be paid out of the street and highway fund.
Troy?
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. What do we have, six here?
Seven.
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 Six, seven, seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Item number one, discuss and consider the vacation of a portion of Athens Court, now Jackpot Way, right-of-way as dedicated by the Coliseum Center addition, located south of 77th Street North and west of Hydraulic Avenue.
Good evening, Council President and Council. Wyandotte Nation, the owner of the property surrounding the portion of Athens Court, which is now Jackpot Way, is requesting the vacation of the cul-de-sac turnaround to facilitate the expansion of their development. The subject right-of-way was originally dedicated and platted as Athens Court as part of Coliseum Center addition in 1991. The majority of the original street right-of-way was subsequently replatted under a different configuration as part of Wild West Edition in 2005, leaving only the circle turnaround remaining in its original orientation. With the development of the casino, this short street segment was renamed Wild West Court to Jackpot Way. And if approved, the vacation would eliminate the remnant portion of the right-of-way as it's on tribal land. There is no identifiable cost to the city for approving the vacation, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions? Take a motion. Okay, Charlie?
Makes sense to me. I move to approve the ordinance 1221-2025, vacating the street right-of-way within the park city, city of Park City, Kansas.
Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote.
Hold on a second. If you could, sir, just to make certain, the suggested motion is to approve the street right-of-way vacation as presented. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Charles Swankie.
Here.
Yes.
Charlie Davidson.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
Terry Osburn.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Troy Hill.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, seven zero. Number two, discuss and consider approval of the Wyandotte Development Edition, a final plat for the property south of 77th Street North between Interstate 135 and Hydraulic Avenue.
Yes, sir. Wyandotte Nation, Winds Hotel and Grand River LLC, the owners of the subject property, as well as MKEC, the agent, are requesting approval of a final plat entitled Wyandotte Development Edition to facilitate the expansion of the Crosswinds Casino development. The subject property was originally platted as Wild West Edition in 2005 and has owned a mix of C2 Service Business District as well as L1 Light Industrial District. This replat primarily reconfigures several of the plotted lots, eliminates one cul-de-sac, and removes several portions of the drainage reserves running north and south through the application area. The proposed 87-acre subdivision also shows one additional access opening onto Hydraulic Avenue for future development within the proposed lots four and five of Block 1. As presented, the subdivision will contain 10 lots for development. Properties across 77th Street to the northeast within Park City are zoned a mix of E Entertainment District and C2 Service Business District and are currently being redeveloped as part of the Golden Circle Casino. The property to the northwest, located in Sedgwick County, is owned in general commercial and is currently undeveloped. Properties across Hydraulic Avenue to the east within Park City are zoned R1 Residential Single Family and R2 Single Family Residential, with a small number of larger lots, suburban homes, and portions currently in agricultural production. Across the interstate to the east is zoned L1 Light Industrial District and developed with commercial and industrial uses. The Planning Commission approved the final plat during its June 16th meeting on a vote of four to one, subject to several conditions. One of the conditions of note is a requirement for the petition to cover the cost of a traffic signal at the intersection of Wyandotte Way and 77th Street. And we have discussed with the party, and they have made those financial guarantees for 25% of the cost of the signal. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions, one through five, that are present in your package. And I stand for any questions.
Jim?
Sean, I was reading this pretty, just reading back through this and just caught this. Says what it is zoned. Are we saying, do we say in here what we're zoning it to?
The zoning is not changing at this time, sir.
We're just changing the plat.
We're just changing the plotted use.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Jim?
I don't have any others, so I would recommend that we approve and accept the dedications as part of the final plat as presented.
Okay, with the, are you including the additional conditions with that?
Yeah, as presented with the additional items.
Brandy?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. Discuss and consider approval of the 2630 Capital Improvement Plan, which we've gone through, the Planning Commission's gone through it. We've gone through it.
Yes, sir. The proposed capital improvement plan was presented and discussed with the council during a special workshop on September 13th. The recommended edits were made, and then the plan was presented to the Planning Commission on September 15th to determine whether it was consistent with the city's comprehensive plan as required by law. With a vote of five to zero, the commission found the plan is consistent with the goals and the objectives of the comprehensive plan and recommended council adopt the plan. Each one of you should have a bound copy of the plan on the dais. And I'll answer any questions.
Any questions of Sean? Terry?
I move to approve the 2026 to 2030 Capital Improvement Plan.
Troy?
I second.
Okay. Are there any questions before we vote?
I just want to say, I comment. I was really impressed, Sean, with the way this was brought out to us in our meeting, the way it covers till 2030. That way, we could go back and say, this is what we're going to do this year. And a lot of cities, I don't think they do it as well as this is and what we can look forward to. We could always go back to this and say, this is what we did. If someone asks us, we could always go back to this platform that you did in putting this together. So, I would say excellent job of doing that.
Thank you.
Agreed. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. Brandy?
No, go ahead.
We're not there yet. Okay. Your light was on. Okay. Discuss and consider approving a contract with the JMG Construction for renovations of the City Administration Center.
Yes, sir. In 2013, council approved a memorandum of understanding with Sedgwick County, allowing the Park City Administration Center to be used by the Sedgwick County Treasurer's Office to offer tax and tag services. Currently, the Treasurer's Office offers services one day a week on Wednesdays, but the response from the community has been overwhelmingly positive, so much that the treasurer would like to expand that to five days a week. When the MOU was initially approved, the city was undergoing renovations to the City Administration Center, and there had been a separate quote provided on how much it would cost to convert the storage room located in the back of council chambers into an office, complete with its own window to the lobby for the county to use. With the limited use of one day a week, the quote was not seen as a good return on their investment. With the proposed use expanding to five days a week, the county has requested an updated quote to convert the space into the office. Attached is an updated estimate from JMG Construction to make the necessary renovations. Sedgwick County is making updates or modifications to the original MOU that will come back to council for a later, at a later date. It is budgeted to be paid for or reimbursed by the Sedgwick County Treasurer's Office, and the amount is $15,850.
Okay, Brandy?
Due to conflict of interest, I'm going to abstain from discussion and vote on this.
All right, we have one recusal. Okay, are there any questions? There a motion to approve? See who I got here firsthand. Charlie?
Yeah, I'm excited to move it to five days a week. I think that's a great thing. So, I move to approve, authorize the mayor to execute a contract with JMG Construction in the amount not to exceed $15,850 to be reimbursed by the Sedgwick County Treasurer.
Okay, Terry?
Charlie, I too am excited to see this and happy to second this motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? There ain't no other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Six.
Six.
Abstain.
Six.
Yeah, with one recusal.
Yep.
Well, I wanted to counter and make her feel good. Okay. Number five, consider ordinance creating Section 15-710 of the municipal code restricting and limiting the use of city water for irrigation purposes.
President and Council, this is an ordinance that's made necessary because of the city's contract relationship with the city of Wichita. We're obligated under that contract where we do receive some of our water. Our CCUA gets water through the city of Park City and the city of Wichita. We're obligated to adopt any water restrictions or conservation measures that Wichita adopts. And you've probably seen on the news recently, Wichita has, they've lessened the restrictions to go now on an odd and even house address. Each address on each side of the street gets three days a week. No waterings on Monday and no waterings during the day from 10 o'clock to 6 o'clock. That's what this ordinance does. It's an ordinance in an ordinance form because at this point, it looks like Wichita is serious about this being a permanent restriction, which means ours will also be that. And in order for us to have the ability to enforce it, it needs to be on the books with some penalties for violation. And that's what you have in front of you here. It's a pretty simple ordinance. There is a provision in there that the city may adopt policies, its own policy. And in this case, I don't think, it's my opinion, we're not limited by exactly what Wichita does in adopting policies that would address special circumstances. For instance, people that need to reseed their lawn, put in sod. I've added some other statements in there about newly planting gardens, trees, shrubs, and other ornamental or decorative plantings. And so, that's something that would be fleshed out later administratively.
Okay, any questions? Any more discussion? I'll entertain a motion. We got Charlie?
Doug, I had a quick question. Is there anything that mentions like well water exemptions? Like, do they just need to put a sign in their yard or on their door? Does that, how do we determine it's well water, if they're watering every day?
Well, if it's well water, yeah. The ordinance only applies to city water. So, if it's well water and, you know.
Well, I'm just saying, as far as.
It would be a good idea, Charlie, if somebody has a well, that they put something in their yard. And I'm, we're small enough, I think, at some point, our code enforcement people are going to become aware of that.
Okay.
Likewise, if they come up and knock on the door and say, you're violating the ordinance, and somebody says, we've got a well, that'd be a good time for them to check it out.
Okay, but there's no requirement for that. It just.
No requirement, but I think from our standpoint, being a whole lot smaller than Wichita, practically, it'll work out, it'll work itself out.
Makes sense to me. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move to approve ordinance 1222-2025, an ordinance creating Section 15710 of the municipal code of Park City, I'm sorry, I keep doing that, of city of Park City, Kansas, pertaining to the limitations and restrictions of the use of city-supplied water for irrigation during certain hours and certain days of the week and providing for penalties for violation of such limitations and restrictions.
Jim?
I'd second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Any questions? This is roll call vote also.
George Glover.
Aye.
Troy Hill.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
Terry Osburn.
Aye.
Charlie Davidson.
Aye.
Charles Swankie.
Aye. Motion carries, seven zero. Number six, consider ordinance amending Section 5-1106 of the municipal code relating to the licensing of private security agencies.
President and Council, sometime in early 2024, the city adopted a comprehensive regulatory ordinance regulating private security agencies and private security officers. That ordinance was largely copied and dropped in from what the city of Wichita has on their books. In practice, the police departments found that some of the requirements to collect information on larger corporate-owned private security agencies when they apply for a license is not necessary and is a little bit burdensome. And you'll see there on the first page of the ordinance, that's subsection D under 51106. And now, only the full name of partners, officers, directors, and associates would be required. No necessity for date of birth, social security number, or resident address. The reason for collecting that in the first instance really relates to then what's on the second page or the subsection H, which is doing background checks. That information is necessary in order to effectively do a background investigation. In practice, again, the police department still retains the right to do background investigations when they see, when they deem it appropriate. But subsection H actually required that that be done for all those persons. And that's impractical, and the police department feels like that can be removed, and it can just now be discretionary on the chief of police. So, that's the two things that this amendment does.
Okay, any questions? Would entertain a motion? Jim?
I thought it was good that the chief retained the ability to provide some scrutiny on that, so that made a lot of sense to me. So, I would therefore move to approve ordinance 1223-2025, an ordinance amending Section 5-1106 of the municipal code related to the private security agency licensing and repealing the original of said section 5-1106.
Okay, is there a second? Charlie?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, we have a roll call again.
Charles Swankie.
Aye.
Charlie Davidson.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
Terry Osburn.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Troy Hill.
Aye.
George Glover.
George Glover?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Okay, governing body reports. Start with Charlie?
I just want to reiterate what was said earlier about the capital improvement plan. Great job to all the staff and directors that put that together. I think the main questions I get from citizens are concerns they have and/or what are we doing, or when's something happening? Well, it's online right now, right? Or it will be? Okay.
Seeing how it's adopted tonight, it will be tomorrow.
That makes sense. So, yeah, so it'll be right online. So I think, great job. I think it really forecasts what, what we've done and where we're going.
Thank you.
Yep.
George?
And also, again, Sean and his staff, Matty, and the, and the work that you guys did, I appreciate that on this. This is, this is outstanding, as far as I'm concerned. Also, Community Relations Board is working on our Fall Fest next month, so be looking forward to that, all the things going on with that. Hopefully, the weather will stay warm, and we won't need our coats. Thank you.
Skip over to Terry?
I'd like to thank Ephraim for delivering our pledge of allegiance this evening. Ephraim did a good job. Of course, I'm a little biased. I'm the scout master of Troop 584. So, so thanks Ephraim for showing up. He, he, this, coming to a city council meeting is, is part of the requirement for citizenship and the community merit badge. And so the, a lot of the troop is going through that. But many of the other scouts elected to go to the Andover City Council Meeting, and so thanks Ephraim for coming here.
Troy?
Yeah, that was pretty cool. I, I was not a boys' scout. I wish I would have. I just missed out on it. But, yeah, great job there. It's nice to see our youth in pointing the right directions. So that's pretty much all I've got.
Brandy?
Just CCUA meets this Thursday at 4:30 here at City Hall.
Just an observation, as we were reading through the municipal code change on water irrigation. A quarter of our city, including me, has been watering on Mondays. It will now be a banned day to water, so myself and everybody else in, in the quadrant of the city needs to please go home and change your automated water sprinklers tonight, so they don't accidentally come on, on running their program. Anyway, I just, observation, thought I'd share. Thanks.
Okay, the, the things that I wanted to take notice of, of course, the Aquatic Center is moving a lot of dirt. That's exciting. Park Center is going vertical in a lot of different places, including the Senior Center. And there was dirt work being done on Champ Town two different days last week, so I'm excited about that. They keep getting rained out, though, so I'm excited to see what they've got going, so. Everything's on its way. Do we have anything else? Motion to adjourn? Jim?
I move we adjourn.
Terry?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Let's see.
How's your business going?
We're early.
Business going?